Call this meeting to order, please. Town of Lee, right to no law, meeting checklist, as chairman of the select board due to the COVID-19 coronavirus crisis. In accordance with Governor's new news emergency order number 12 pursuant to executive order 2020-04, this board is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to the meeting which is authorized pursuant to the governor's order. However, in accordance with emergency order, this has confirmed that we are A, providing public access to the meeting by telephone, with additional access possibilities by video or other electronic means. We're utilizing a Zoom platform for this electronic meeting. All members of the board have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during this meeting through the Zoom platform, and the public has access to contemporaneously listen and if necessary, to participate in this meeting through the dialing the following phone number. 1-646-558-8656 and entering meeting ID 85835710952. Password 534667 by entering the same information through zoom.us. B, providing public notice of the necessary information for accessing the meeting. We previously gave notice to the public of how to access the meeting using Zoom, and instructions are provided on the Town of Lee's website at leenewhampton.org. C, providing a mechanism for public to alert the public body during the meeting if there are problems with access. If anybody has a problem, phone call 603-659-5414. And D, adjourning the meeting if the public is unable to access the meeting. In the event the public is unable to access the meeting, we will adjourn the meeting and have it rescheduled to another time. Please note that all votes taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call vote. Let's start the meeting by taking roll call attendance. When each member states their presence, also can state whether there's anyone in the room with you during this meeting, which is required under the right to no law. Mr. Bugby?
I am here and there's nobody else here.
Mr. Brown?
I am here, there is nobody else here.
Ms. Lacorze, I am here and nobody else is here. Can I ask people to mute until you want to talk or you're recognized? Thank you. First order of business, John Tappan, trustees of the trust fund chair.
First, I want to thank Karen Long for all the years that she served as a trustee of Trust Fund. Her work is appreciated. I met Michelle Martinson at the Meet the Candidates event at the library in March. She introduced herself and expressed interest in the work of the trustees. We kept in touch, she attended one of our meetings, she was still interested, asking what she could do to prepare for the position. I think that Michelle's application shows that she's qualified, and I recommend that the select board appoint her to the vacant term which goes through this coming March.
Questions or comments from the board members? Mr. Brown?
No, I'm in favor.
Okay, Mr. Bugby?
I'm all set, sir.
All right, therefore I move to a point. I move to the appointment of Michelle Martinson as trustee of the trust funds to serve until March 2021. Mary Second?
Second.
Any further discussion on the motion?
No.
Vote, please. Mr. Brown?
I'm all for it.
Mr. Bugby?
Yes.
Ms. Lacorze, yes. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else, John?
I know that was it. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next order of business, Andy Gasell, library. Whoever wants to speak.
Well, I'm here to speak and hopefully we can update the select board and bring forward the plans and drawings that have been presented by SMP Architecture and that we have approved of. And first page that you're looking at here that Julie has brought up is the timeline of everything that has happened since January. And it carries us through the summer and through the last meetings that we had.
Whoever that is, could you please mute it, please?
Yeah, just did.
Thank you.
So in the plans and drawings that we sent out to the board, there were a number of things that were determined, that the basement would be remodeled and refitted for the non-fiction stacks. The children's area is going to be moved into the schoolhouse with movable furniture. And there's going to be a movement of the circulation desk and the director's office. There'll be an addition of another restroom. And the addition will include adult space and a multimedia room. Actually, I don't know, Julie, did you want to pull those up or not? Because, okay.
Which one do you want?
Well, this will be good. This is a good one. And within these schematic budget set of drawings that came from SMP, there were a number of things that were listed that were very important, the actual phasing and the pretty small print over there. But if you enlarge it, you can get a good look at how they phase the different parts of the project. Actually, our next step will be putting out an RFP for a construction manager. An SMP architects will be helping us draw that up. We'll be sending it out to those companies and firms that we have had some experience with in the past in the other library plans that we have gone through. We'll be finalizing the budget and we'll be working with our existing funds that we have available. And we will, we have a plan to fundraise for any additional monies over what we have. Just want to say that this is an ideal time for renovation because of the fact that at this point, due to COVID, we are not doing any in-library programming for both children's or adults. Our children's librarian has done some outdoor programming. And being that the library is at limited use right now, this is a great time for us to move ahead with this project. Our initial work would include that we would renovate the existing meeting room, which is in the basement, and put in a lift to access that since it is not ADA compliant at this point. With the movement of the children's area into the schoolhouse, that'll be putting it back to the whole idea of what it was originally, being used by children. So additionally, there'll be a structural upgrade in the schoolhouse section in the basement. And we've discussed that with the select board in the past. So we're all understanding that we need to do that to support any additional use and weight in the schoolhouse. If we have any questions, I think that would be the time to ask. I might ask also if any of the other, well, if any of the other trustees who are all at this meeting have anything else that they would like to say.
Any other trustees? May you may speak.
Hi, yeah, hi guys. Nice to talk to you. I really want to reiterate what Annie said about this is a really good time. We probably won't have any in-house programming until next summer, I'm thinking at the earliest. And so we can work on the build on the basement parts, and especially in the children, what has been the children's area down in the basement, with minimal disruption to, you know, the library services. It's always a problem when you're renovating to keep the library going at the same time. And I guess this is the silver lining in a very dark cloud, but it just seems a good opportunity.
I have a couple of questions. I think I remember, you're not going for a bond vote, are you?
No, we're not.
So you feel there's enough monies in the fund to move forward with the, it looks like a very nice design. It's very nice. Do you feel comfortable?
We feel comfortable at this point because we haven't finalized the budget, also because there is definitely going to be a fundraising campaign put on by the foundation, the Lee Library Public and Community Center Foundation.
Yeah, we feel that once some work is being done and people see what we're doing, it'll be easier to fundraise. It's been hard to fund. We have done some fundraising in the past couple of years, but it's been hard without any, a project to work for because nobody knows what we're doing. And also the fact, the children's area, I feel is a good, strong point for fundraising because it is returning the purpose of the schoolhouse portion back to what it was, you know, in earlier in Lee's history. And, you know, I think, you know, that's a good thing. One thing that the plans don't show is that eventually, Phase Four, Five, or Six, if you will, it wouldn't, I'm pointing at this and you can't see it. Yeah, this Zoom thing is frustrating sometimes. But we would at a later date be able to close off the schoolhouse portion and possibly put a door in through the vestibule area so that it possibly could become space that's available after hours. If you look at the porch and the main entrance there, there is a place where a door could go in off what is the vestibule. So, but that would be in the future. Right now, we're not concentrating on big community space for obvious reasons, and we're incorporating and spreading out to make, you know, some people are comfortable in the building and also incorporating outdoor space. I mean, I think that's, you know, COVID eventually will go away, but we could get something else, and I think we have to, you know, always keep this in mind.
And I suppose you'd be looking for new furniture, right? For a new building?
Well, eventually, you know, we really do plan to live within our means. You know, the community has made it clear that they appreciate that. And, you know, we'll buy furniture, you know, as we have with fundraising, and we do have furniture we can use. I mean, it might not be the prettiest, but, you know, if it works to tide us over for a while, while, you know, we save up and get some more, you know, we'll do that. I mean, it's like when you buy your first house, you don't furnish it completely.
True, very true.
You might sleep on a mattress on the floor for a while, or, you know.
True. Questions from the board?
I would, to anticipate what you think the schedule would be for groundbreaking, are you looking at like something like March, April?
No, not quite that early.
Not quite that early, okay.
No, I think we could start renovation on the basement as soon as we can get somebody in to work on it. You know, possibly the groundbreaking for the addition part would be later. But, you know, the basement needs to be renovated and the other one needs to be shored up so we can be flexible in how we move things around and have stacks moving in. So I think we, you know, as soon as we line up the construction manager and get a budget that we're happy with, at least for a beginning, I'd say we, let's do it now. It wouldn't be now, starting tomorrow, but, you know.
No? Okay, great.
Mr. Bugby, any questions?
I have a lot.
Uh-oh.
So, no, no, that's not necessarily bad. It's clarification on some things. I noticed from the drawing you have places for only two computers. You have more than that now. Is there a reason for that, or is it space constraints? What's the issue?
Ruth, can you talk to that?
Yeah, I had to find my unmute button, sorry. Yeah, right now it's showing dedicated two computers for actual at-computer-desk type work. We anticipate, you know, as, as things improve, that more and more people are bringing in laptops, more and more people are bringing Chromebooks in. We're going to try and provide some other alternatives. We might even be able to loan Chromebooks when they come in the door. The plan is that we will certainly have a much better Wi-Fi system. I think that's really the way that a lot of people are moving towards, but we do need to have at least a couple designated, which is why it's showing just two there.
Okay, all right. The porch that's out front where the vestibule is, is that, are you putting a basement underneath that? Is that a slab? What are you exactly doing with that? I assume it's enclosed in terms of the vestibule, not the porch, right?
There would be, there would be a foundation underneath the vestibule area.
Okay.
And it's probably shown in this little, in the little stuff on the side there that I can never read unless I get a magnifying glass or zoom it up. But there would be a foundation there and a slab.
Okay. My next to the last question is, in terms of progress, how is this transitioning? Because you're moving things around and you're going to be like closed for a period of time. How are you going to work that out?
I think if we, oh, sorry.
Go ahead, go ahead, Ruth.
I think if they, if we can concentrate on working on the basement part, the part in the back where the stacks are, they could probably do quite a bit of work in that corner. We could move some collections around because that's showing right, right in the corner where we keep our mysteries. Might have to find some creative shelving ideas for that temporarily. But if they're working just in that section, I think that's doable. We can probably move collections downstairs in a temporary, for a temporary basis, so they can work in that part. And the sooner we can get the front schoolhouse portion supported, we can move stacks in there. That could be, you know, a good movable solution. So can we use the storage shed? Not for programming.
The hobo shed?
No, no, that, that little metal, metal thing that's out there.
Oh.
The town clerks, you know.
It's heavy demand for that, Ruth. Heavy demand.
How about, how about town hall?
Well, that depends on what happens later in the meeting, so we'll see. My last, my last question kind of ties in with that. One of the things that we're talking about later is creating a committee to look at finalizing renovations for the town hall. And one of the things that the grand plan that didn't pass last year and the year before involved putting in a new septic system. And the thought was to put one in that serviced the library and the town hall. Now, I know, I don't know if that's part of your dealings, but that's something that we need to look at. So I don't know if there's, and I know you're working on budgets and stuff like that, but I don't know if your project can take on some of those particular expenses or not. But that's something that going forward, we're going to have to discuss how that works. Because right now you go to a holding tank, and now that you have yet another bathroom, there's going to be more, I would assume, uses of that particular tank, so I'm not sure. So I just wanted to bring that up to you.
I'm, I'm pretty sure we're not, we're not, we're not thinking about the septic because not knowing what, when we've been talking, we don't, we haven't known what the town hall plans are. And the town hall plans, I mean, it's going to be several years down the road before anything happens since you need town approval. So, I mean, we can be open for that, but, I mean, I think we were planning to continue with the existing septic, and Annie or Ruth can correct me if I'm mistaken on that.
Yes, that's exactly what I think we are planning on what we have now. Only because we didn't have any idea.
I would also bring up that with the, so many of the town personnel moving out of this space, that there's going to be far less usage of the, of the septic at this point.
Yep.
Karen, yeah, you going to address that? Yeah, so I don't have the RSA in front of me, but if you do a renovation to a building and the septic is in failure, and the state's definition of failure is anything that doesn't have a design on file and/or a holding tank. So if it doesn't have a tank and a leach field, you need to put in a septic. And I will shoot you guys the RSA on that tomorrow. But if there's no design on file, if you do a certain amount of renovation, you need to put in a septic.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Karen.
In addition to that, I think the library has its own tank.
Yes.
It does.
So it's not going to matter if there's no one in town hall and there's nobody in the annex. Didn't know that.
Correct.
Everybody forgets about the septic system, except the septic guy.
Everybody forgets about the septic until there's a problem.
Yes, or, yes, yes, yes. So it's just, I just wanted to bring that up as an issue. So as we progress with the town hall, we're going to have, have conversations with you guys as well in terms of how that all plays out. The original design called for a leach field and a septic tank for the library and the town hall. And it would be kind of foolish for us as a town to put in one for the town hall and not deal with the issues with the library as well. They're so close, you might as well just combine them, so.
Yep, that makes sense.
Yes, thank you, Scott, for those questions.
All right, yeah, well, it looks, looks really nice. Looks really nice. I've already picked out where I'm going to be sitting, so hopefully that can be reserved for me.
Yeah, certainly, Scott. Any fundraising, you know, opportunities here, we can certainly have the Scott Bugby corner.
No, 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 I don't want a corner, just a chair.
We can have the Scott.
I can't afford a corner. Maybe a chair, but not a corner. That's way too.
Remember, you said we need a new furniture, so, you know, there, there we go. So we can get a comfy armchair for you and we'll be in touch.
All right, well.
Scott, you can name the chair. Put your name on it for $10,000, right?
Oh, wow. Jeez. What a deal.
Name on the chair.
Scott, for you, you can get two chairs for $10,000.
There you go.
Well, I just want to thank the library trustees for all the work they've done. Obviously, they've put in a lot of time and effort in working with the firm for, for creating this, so thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I just want to say one thing. So we do plan to proceed with the RFP for the construction manager, and we'll obviously, you know, let you know about that. But that's, you know, we need to do that just to help finalize the budget and, you know, get going on renovations. So, so we have, you know, we're all in agreement that that's going to happen.
Penny, let me make a suggestion at this point. The plans look really nice. It would be nice to get this into the Lee Crier. You don't have to put a lot in, say this is some preliminary thoughts on the design for considering for the library expansion and renovation. I think it'll start to build now, the opportunity for people to see it. So when you start talking about going after, you know, donations and funds to add to it, at least it'll be in their minds, it'll be lingering. So maybe you should consider putting a pitcher and some verbiage inside there.
I would just say that that would be our next step after we've brought the plans to you. So now we'll make them public.
Sounds good.
So it would still be good to start the proceedings for an RFP because everything takes time.
Mm-hmm. I agree.
Okay.
All right, thank you very much on that issue.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we're going to move on. Don Jeans, Conservation Commission Chair. Are you there, Don?
You're muted.
There we go. Sorry about that. Hopefully you've seen our draft of our guidelines for use of trails. We've seen a lot of heavy use of the trails around town this year, more than in the past. And in a couple of situations, we've realized that people have taken it upon themselves to adorn the trails with items of their own or change the route and things like that. So in an effort to educate our residents about that the board, the select board is the only one that can approve something being added to town-owned land, and that the Conservation Commission is working to make sure that the trails are in good ecologically, good ecological locations, and there's no extra damage from traffic. So that's what the guidelines is about. We would envision being able to have this show up in the E-Crier and post it on the Conservation Commission pages on the website. And we also would like to get more training about building trails and, and having more expertise in this matter. We've reached out to Cooperative Extension, and they've offered to give some training to us at the end of October or early November. But we also find ourselves pretty shorthanded, so we're even kicking around if we couldn't recruit some help and perhaps have a trails subcommittee. Again, the impact on trails has been pretty extensive this year, seems like. With everybody home, they want to trot out through the woods. And you've already been through approving something last month that had appeared on town property. So it's an educational piece. It's a draft. If you have any edits, be happy to take them. If it's good the way it is, then we'll work on trying to get it on our website and add it to the E-Crier.
Questions and comments from the board or anybody else at this time?
I'm all set.
I'm good.
I thought you did a very good job. Everything looks really nice. I think we'll proceed with this. Therefore, I move to approve the Conservation Commission's guidelines for the use of trails in the Town of Lee as presented. Do I have a second?
Second.
Further discussion on the motion?
None, for me.
Mr. Brown, what's your vote?
Yes.
Mr. Bugby?
Yes.
Ms. Lacorze, yes. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Anything else, Don?
No, that's it for me. Ann will talk on some other things, but I'll leave you now.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right.
Okay. Ann Tappan, Steve Ellis.
Yes, hello. And so I'm here to request permission to have the Public Works Department install a cover on the open cistern, which is also known as a water storage tank on the town-owned Maud Jones Forest, and to demolish the structure above the tank. The, in your agenda packet, there's photographs of the tank and the structure. This is a little unusual in that the, the structure is on the Maud Jones property. There is a deed to Joe Ford's former property that conveys perpetual water rights to springs on Joe Ford property, now town property, and also to this water storage tower which is on the Maud Jones property. However, this deteriorated wooden structure over the open cistern presents quite a safety hazard. And demolishing that structure and covering the open cistern would rectify this situation. And this action does not change the water rights conferred by the deed. The Public Works Department has covered the two open wells on the Ford property, and there's photographs of that. And Steve Bullock, Public Works Manager, will discuss some possible similar fixes for this situation, assuming that the board approves this action.
Questions?
I'd like to hear from Steve.
I'll be completely up to you guys on what it looks like. We can try to build something like what's there now over it, which will be a fair amount of money. Or we can put something like we put on Joe Ford, and we did both of those covers on Joe Ford for, well, we had the metal roofing in the dump or the transfer station lying around, and then 40 bucks, $40 in wood, so we did those two for $40. If we did this kind of covers we put in, Joe Ford would probably be about $100 to cover it. If we did it the other way, it's probably looking around $500, maybe more. I mean, it's easy to do. It's not, either way is easy to do and it's doable. One's just way very much cheaper than the other.
If I can ask a question, Steve, is that cover that I'm looking at, is it fastened down?
Which one? The Joe Ford covers?
Yeah.
There are metal stakes driven into the ground on each side of the, the well that are driven into the ground, probably four feet. And then we screwed the stakes to the frame. the stakes to the frame we built over the top of them. So if anyone had to get into them, all they have to do is take a couple screws out and slide the cover off and then slide it back on.
Well, just, you know, on the face of it, both of them gives me real safety concerns, to be honest with you.
Um, just, I've, I've been out to the site to see these and you can't lift them up. So previously, what's under here is just an open well.
And how deep is it?
Um, well.
One of them, I don't know how deep it is. The other one's probably six feet deep and I've stood on the top of both of them, so you're not falling through them. Because there's strapping and, and support underneath all that metal roofing.
Okay.
Well, I don't, I don't see the advantage to build these, you know, A-frame structure or something over the top of it. It's not like people walk out there and visit or anything whatsoever. These, this cistern basically just, well, it's a water storage cistern, right? It does feed water to somebody. So I imagine I would probably go with the one that looks like you did on the Joe Ford in the sense that if it's obviously bolted down, nobody's going to really trip over it and fall in, and that's what I'm worried about at this time.
Um, this, this water tank is connected to the deed for the people that live at the Joe Ford house.
Okay.
Um, and it's a very unusual situation. This deed was put in place in 1919. The, the rights to that, to the water storage tank. And that excerpt is in the, in the packet information. I, it is not used, but they do have the rights to it. And it's unclear. In fact, so the, the piping would go from this storage tank under Garrity Road, so through the woods, under Garrity Road to the house. And I don't know specifically if there's any actual connection at this time, but they do have deeded rights to it.
Looks like there's stuff floating inside of it from the picture.
I think it's a dead body, John.
That's what I thought. Halloween comes again. You're going to take, you're going to take that tree down while you're there?
What? No, this, it's, what's in there is a ladder. There's a ladder floating.
That's what it is.
We have no idea how deep that is.
Wow.
I have a couple of questions, Sean.
Go ahead.
Uh, one, in terms of, this is really, I think, for Ann or maybe for Steve. The whole point of this is so that nobody accidentally falls in, correct? We're not trying to keep water out of it from, you know, rain and stuff like that, correct?
This is, this is a liability issue, same thing with the Ford springs. It's to make it so that there's no accidental falling in, whether it's an animal or a person, because you can see from looking at the structure, the roof is badly deteriorated.
Yep.
The, the, both ends are open, the one that looks like it sort of has a door that just can flop open.
Okay. I, I, I agree with John, whatever we need to do to, like, top it off. The other thing, and I think maybe Ann, you can speak to this a little bit, I think it would be ultimately the town's intention to contact the property owner and see if they were relinquish rights to this particular well and also those other two springs so that we don't have to continue to maintain this. Maybe we can fill them in or something. Um, I, I would hope that would be what we'd want to ultimately do, so we don't have to maintain these forever, especially if they're not being used. Because the Joe Ford owner already has a, I believe he has the Artesian well. So I don't believe he's using these, but that would just be my concern and my intention going forward.
That it is, it, this really is a town issue rather than a conservation issue. It's just that these happen to be on conservation properties. And on the Ford property, there are the two open wells that were pictured that have been covered. There is a third spring that is where they were getting their water. Um, I, as far as I know, that connection is still viable. They did put in a drilled well in December. The other, the, the other well that, the other spring is not a, a hazard at all.
Okay. Well, I guess I would, I propose to the other select board members is if this is definitely a town issue, which it sounds like it is, we should pursue with the landlord and see if we can get them to relinquish rights to those springs and wellhouse going forward, especially if they're not going to use it. And if I was a homeowner, I wouldn't want to use that as my water source anyway, so. But, you know, that's just me.
I am, I am in total agreement with you, Scott. But at this point, I guess we're going to give permission to go ahead and cover it the simple way like we saw with respect to the Joe Ford property and have the Public Works Department go ahead and, and work to get it done as quickly as possible.
I would concur with that. And also with your request that that tree in front of the one on the Maud Jones with the blue tape on it, that get taken down at the same time, that's all rotted out, so.
You okay with that, Mr. Brown?
Yes, sir.
All right. I guess you have our permission to move forward.
Thank you very much.
Anything else?
Do we need a vote for that, Mr. LaCourts?
I don't know, do we?
I was just requesting permission, so however you have to handle it.
How about I just paraphrase your words at this point. We grant permission to have the Public Works Department stall a cover on the open cistern, the large, the AKA water storage tank in the town-owned Maud Jones Forest and to demolish the structure above the tank and also to remove the tree that's alongside of it. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion on the motion?
No.
Mr. Brown, vote?
Yes.
Mr. Bugby?
Yes, sir.
Ms. LaCourts, yes, motion carries. What do you think you're going to get it done, Steve?
Uh, it's gonna, we have to order metal roofing. So whenever that gets shipped in, but all that comes from Canada, so we only need two sheets, so hopefully I can find some at a place lying around and we won't have to wait for it to come from over the border.
Okay. Anything else on this subject?
I, I think I'm okay.
Okay, good. Thank you very much on that.
Thank you.
Steve, you're back on the floor.
Yes, so we, the dumpster for the MSW Packer, so it'd be dumpster number one, is 11 years old and it's started to split along one of the seams on top, and we've already welded it three times and it keeps splitting. So when you go in the dumpster, when it's empty, you can see daylight out the top. We've put enough pressure on it packing trash that the bottom frame is twisted, so one of the wheels is off the ground and the can is bent. And it's supposed to be an octagon. It's more round than octagon now. So we called a place called Buck's Metal Fabrication in Pennsylvania, Ruddco in New Jersey and Atlantic Recycling over in Rollinsford and got three quotes. And Ruddco came in at $9,036 and that's delivered. We then asked them for references and called three municipalities that are using their dumpsters and they've been nothing but happy and have started moving away from using waste equipment bucks and buying the Ruddco dumpsters because they're cheaper and built better. And then the dumpster that we had specked out has three belly bands on it, so hopefully we don't blow the seams out and they'll last a little longer. And we've got all the cross members on the bottom custom built, so they're closer together. So we bought a heavier duty dumpster than anything we've bought in the past, hoping that it'll last longer.
Questions for Steve?
Steve, I'm looking at the capital improvements plan for your transfer station area. Is this?
Yeah, it's, it's really, really messed up. We didn't figure that out until another day.
So this is not replacing like roll-off container number 49?
No, it is replacing roll-off container number 49 because this is container number 49. All the numbers in the CIP are messed up.
Oh, okay.
And we didn't catch that until a month or so ago. Peter and I went through it all and figured out that all the numbers for the dumpsters are not accurate.
All right.
So this is dumpster number 49 that we're trying to replace.
All right. And it is scheduled for 2021, so.
Yes. It's just listed for some reason as an open top, not a closed top, and we're trying to buy a closed top.
All right, all right, fair enough. Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions for Steve? Therefore, I move to accept the recommendation to purchase a 40-yard Ruddco dumpster and approve with a withdrawal of $9,036 for this purchase from the transfer station equipment Capital Reserve Fundory. Or second?
Second.
Hearing no discussion. All those in favor, Mr. Bugby?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. LaCourts, motion carries. Anything else, Steve?
No, that's, actually, yes, I do have one other thing. Julie and I have been dealing with the Tuttle Road project and the Chesley Brook project on Packers Falls Road. We've had some pretty serious issues dealing with DES and fishing game about specifically the Chesley Brook project, and we're trying to get ARM grants and fishing game funds because the price of that with the endangered species that are in that pipe are going to push closer to $550,000 to replace that culvert. And obviously, we don't have that kind of money, so we're trying to get ARM grants. The engineer we were using was not working out, so we've moved on and we are looking at other options with the wetlands permits and the ARM grant, so we can try to get at least $250,000 from the ARM grant and then hopefully a little bit more from fishing game, so we're not on the hook for all of it. The engineer that we had has never done an ARM grant before and things just weren't working out, so we moved on. We're going to look at other engineers to move forward to try to get these projects done.
Thank you on that. Questions, Steve, on this issue?
What is an ARM grant, Steve?
It's, so there, it's a mitigation grant. When you pay into a wetlands project, you, to get wetlands applicant, or wetlands permits, you have to pay some kind of money to mitigation and there's certain amount of money that go toward each watershed and there's, I think they said $2 million available for the Oyster River watershed to apply for.
Oh, okay.
That we might be able to get.
Okay. So it's a state thing?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, fair enough.
Yep.
Thank you on that, Steve. Anything else?
No, that's it.
Thank you. Scott, party.
Good evening.
Evening.
I'm coming to the board to ask you guys to approve a memorandum of understanding with UNH, the Police Department Communication Center who does our dispatching for us. Couple of years ago, we found that the MOU that was, that we currently had, had a lot of wordage in it that needed to be removed because it no longer applies to us or the dispatch center. So we've reworked this agreement with them. UNH has gone over it. Our town attorneys have gone over it. And what they've actually allowed us to do is to apply, or to accept a three-year contract. This is going to keep the rates the same for the next three years at $91,000. They did come out with a fee that they're going to determine the three-year average of our call volume. McGregor does this and it's kind of the norm in, in our line of business, so three-year average for this year would be $91,000 and then it would continue for the next three years. After the three years, we would do another memorandum of undergr, uh, memorandum of understanding. And they would rework the fees depending on that average.
Hey, Scott, questions for the chief?
Um, I do.
Please.
Um, well, first off, it says page one of four, two of four, where's three of four?
One of four, two of four.
Oh, there it is. I'm sorry.
Four of four. Four of four. I got it.
Sorry. But I do have a question on the bottom of page two. This is really a question for Julie. It says we have to provide them with a million dollars of liability insurance. We already have that, right?
Correct.
And we can name them? That's not an additional cost or anything?
Uh, correct.
All right. No, I have no more questions.
Mr. Brown, any questions?
No, I'm fine with it.
Therefore, I move to approve the agreement between the Town of Lee and the University of New Hampshire. Police Department Communication Center has presented said agreement shall remain in effect from July 1st, 2020 through June 3rd, 2023. The cost for the said service shall be $9,100 per year for each of the service years beginning July 4th, excuse me, correction, July 1st, 2020, July 1st, 2021, and July 1st, 2022. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Discussion on the motion?
No.
Hearing none. Mr. Brown, your vote?
Yes.
Mr. Bugby?
Yes.
Ms. LaCourts, yes, motion carries. Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
Anything else?
No, that's it.
Okay, thank you. Well, it looks like Selectman Bugby has some discussion items here.
No, just, just a few. 7A Lamprey Regional Cooperative. The cooperative has changed how they do things, as you probably know. Uh, instead of billing through the cooperative, now billing comes directly to each of the, the client towns. So the administrative needs of the cooperative have become lessened. They usually had a, a capital reserve or unassigned fund balance, if you will, for the closure account and also for the operating account. That isn't really needed anymore. So one of the things they're going to be talking about at the meetings coming up this fall is in terms of divesting this out, the cooperative of some of those particular funds. The conversation has been in terms of, you know, do we not bill for, you know, period of time? Do you want the cash back in one check? So I'm seeking the boards in terms of opinion on what they would like to do. So when I go to the meeting, I can say Town of Lee would like a check for each of those, or we'd like to have it over a period of time. So it's really something for the board to think about. I don't know if you want to have a discussion about it uh, at this time, or we can wait and think about it, but that's something that's going to be coming up, so I need some direction in terms of how the town would like those funds returned.
Julie, you have any comment?
No, it's, I mean, it's just really how the board wants the, to get the money back.
Probably want the money back. Where do the funds go?
Well, I mean, if we just get a check back from them, it would just go into the unassigned fund balance.
Mr. Brown, you have comments?
No, not really. Cash or check.
I'm sorry, Scott, do you, do you have any idea what, how much money we're talking about?
Well, there's two accounts, as I mentioned before. There's a closure account, which is for the landfill.
Right.
Right at the moment, the cooperative is doing a study. Uh, when the landfill was put in in the eighties, I don't remember, '82, '83, whatever it was, DES had so many regulations, there's so much equipment down there that is not even being used anymore and is not needed anymore.
Yeah.
So we're hiring a firm to come in and do an evaluation of what needs to be done, create a maintenance schedule and things that need to be done. So right at the moment, the closure account has probably about a little bit more than $200,000 in there. So the group has to determine what gets returned. And then the Town of Lee put in about 10%. So whatever that number is, the Town of Lee would get about 10%. So if they decided they give back the whole $200,000, we'd get about $20,000 of that particular fund.
Yeah.
The operating account has a little bit, about $300,000. So for to give back all of it, Town of Lee would get another $30,000 from that. I suspect they want to keep something in there, but, you know, those are the kind of numbers we're talking about.
Okay, well, in that case, I might change my answer.
Okay.
Because, I mean, that's what we call real money.
Yes.
And at the time we get it, we're going to have to accept it as unanticipated revenue. And the board can direct that to a particular use, so it may be at the time we get the money that you, that we have a need for it and you might want to direct the funds.
Okay.
That sounds like a viable solution to me.
So do we want to put this on the agenda for later on? Do you want to decide now? What's your thought?
I would just go with Julie said. I think that's the best way to go.
Which is you want it at one time.
At the time we you accept the money, the board direct where they want it to go.
Yeah, but.
But I mean, it's still a check.
It's a check.
If you do it as a one-time thing, yes.
Yeah, yep.
So would the board's intention be to uh, want it all at once in terms of a one-time payment?
I would imagine, yes.
Yeah, take the money and run.
Yes.
Money and run.
It's always a need to talk more.
All right, I will. I will vote that way. That's not necessarily how the rest of the towns are going to vote, but I will vote that way when the issue comes up in front of the committee.
Sounds good.
Uh, seven B, the NHMA conference is coming up, October third. Um, we have to pre-register. Uh, also, the board needs to direct if I'm authorized to vote for the Town of Lee. I do not have all the issues at the moment. They're supposed to be sending something. I do not have it yet. So I need instructions, one, in terms of if I'm the voting member that's attending, and two, how you want to vote on each of those particular issues.
Well, since we don't have the issues in front of us right now.
No, I'm not asking you to vote on the issues without seeing them. I guess I need to have your permission that I'm the voting member of however we vote, because I need to sign up.
I recommend that Scott is the voting member. What do you say, Mr. Brown?
I agree.
Thank you for the voting member.
I will forward you, uh, because we're probably not going to meet before then. Uh, I will forward you the things and maybe you can convey your thoughts on each of them to Julie, and then she can tell me. Would that work?
Yeah.
All right. Seven C, ABC has had a resignation. Patrick Hotalian has resigned. They're moving to more southern uh, location. So um, the ABC met last week. We do not have any recommendations in terms of filling the slot. So it asked the board if they're amenable, if we can put a notice in the equire that there's an open position for the ABC to see if we can get anybody that's interested.
Yes.
Yes, let's do it.
Okay, that one was easy. Uh, seven D, uh, the Town Hall renovation committee thrice. It's not as catchy as TCVC, but that's what we've come up with. Uh, we've created up a recommended charge. Uh, hopefully you've had a chance to look at it, and hopefully we can move forward with this. Um, but looking for comments from the board. Any particular issues?
I don't have any issues. I just want to put a discussion point on the table for now is it is my hope somewhere down the road that we will get a new, brand-new Town Hall, and it will be in the daily building for a period of time. I would imagine at least three years. I know we have the opportunity to roll it over for two more times, so that would give us nine years maximum if you wanted to. We'd probably go more if we we needed to at that point. And the point of the Town Hall renovation charge is to, you know, try to get the Town Hall back to somewhat like it was originally a meeting hall, if you want to call it that. We're committed on this, but there's always a possibility that we keep trying to get a, uh, you know, a new Town Hall, and we just can't sink it. The the legislative body just not interested. And then across, what if the nine years run out, the daily building is no longer available to us? But we've looked for funds and basically brought the existing old Town Hall up into a meeting facility. It no longer could be used for a Town Hall if we have to move back in. I'm willing to take that risk. I just want to put it on the floor.
Okay.
Knowing that, you know, if we move forward uh, as we are here with the charge, which basically means you'll have to go for a vote come this uh, in two thousand twenty-one, uh, that we're making a commitment at this time.
Well, I think that was that that's a good discussion when the warrant article gets brought up, because one of the concerns I've heard is, well, okay, we understand why you're moving to the daily building. We understand why you're renovating the Town Hall, but what happens after that?
Yeah.
We're waiting for the other shoe to drop. And I said at this moment, we haven't really discussed what happens after that. We're trying to just make these two things work, so. But that is definitely a a a point of concern in terms of, you know, what's the big plan versus the smaller, you know, increments, so. The other thing I wanted to bring up, I brought it up at the library discussion, but the whole issue about the septic system. Um, when we originally did this with AZ AECM, the septic system was part of the big plan, not part of the renovation of the Town Hall. So we're going to have to explore that as well in terms of this charge. I would ask the board's permission to include that. Uh, we're talking about renovating the building, but I think we also need to look at what it would cost to put in a septic system in a leach field for the library and the Town Hall, and it doesn't make sense to do one and then not do the other, but uh, I would hope that would be included. So I'm looking for your extension to that, your acquiescence, if you will.
No, I would take that as, uh, I think your point is well-made, that obviously we renovate structures and so forth. There's the opportunity to improve things as much as possible.
Okay.
You know, obviously with the library and and if we basically renovate the existing Town Hall, and plus there's always this opportunity that we can provide at least some ground structure for expansion for the proposed down the road, the new town facility. So at least we have some something, some physical structure in place, at least a plan at this point.
Okay.
I agree. So I'd like to allow the committee to make modification to the charge.
Okay.
I have no problem with the charge. The date looks good. I think it's it's got enough breathing space to make it happen. So therefore, I'm going to move to approve the Town Hall renovation committee charge as presented with a modification that the committee also considers the need for a a septic, you know, septic field and and structure to accommodate the existing Town Hall, new library, and possibly a a brand-new existing, a new building.
Okay.
Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Any discussion?
No, actually, there is.
Okay.
Uh-oh, there is.
Yes, I understand. I see now I see you've you've resurrected a a conversation about a new Town Hall. So now we're going to have a Town Hall that we're moving into, and we're going to have a Town Hall that we're refurbishing to make into a meeting house. We're going to put in a septic system to accommodate, to accommodate the library and this town and this refurbishment. But then we also, if if we're gonna if we're gonna hang out this banner to talk about a new Town Hall at some point, then I guess the septic system should accommodate that possibility, should it not?
I agree wholeheartedly.
Well, just just as far as a piece of information, we had that discussion in the TCVC. Uh, it would make more sense to have a separate septic system for the library and the Town Hall, and then depending on where you've got this new Town Hall or proposed Town Hall, that would be its own septic system. Um, they did not recommend us using one septic system for all those buildings at Town Center. It's just, it was, it's too much.
And we have plenty of space anyways.
But but if you make if you make the current Town Hall as a public meeting space.
Yep.
What happens after you after you get all that done? Does that mean we're going to occupy that other building forever and ever until such time we get a new Town Hall?
That's that's what I was talking about, that people had a a issue that we haven't given them what the grand scheme is. And at that point, I couldn't respond because we, as a group, have not talked about that. We've talked about getting a place for our staff to be during the COVID nineteen issue, which is the daily building. We've talked about renovating the Town Hall into a meeting space, but we haven't talked and taken that particular issue any further than that.
Well, I think we, I think we need to, don't we?
It's well.
I mean, what's what's the warrant article going to going to ask for? In your mind, Scott, what's the warrant article going to ask for?
Well, the committee is going to come back to the board with our recommendation in terms of the plan and also cost to do that, whatever that happens to be. It's going to include a septic system. But that's all the warrant article is going to going to do. It's going to request monies from the Town Building Capital Reserve, the Town Hall Renovation Capital Reserve.
To make it into a meeting space.
What?
To make it into a meeting space.
Make it into a meeting space. That's all it's going to do in my vision. The next phase, we haven't even talked about, we haven't even planned for, um, so. The other question, which I'll bring it up now, because we should really talk about it, is in terms of timing of this whole thing. You know, one of the things that Mr. Lacorice has spoken about in terms of getting funding for this, external funding, maybe through L-Chip or something like that. If we go for L-Chip funding, the proposals need to begin in April of May of two thousand twenty-one. You don't know if you're getting any grant until December of two thousand twenty-one. Do we actually want to wait that long to renovate the Town Hall? Uh, if we do, that's fine. If we don't, then you can't, you know, get apply for those particular grants, because you can't start the project until you get notified if you've won or not, or been awarded monies.
I understand that, and I think that's a discussion down the road, uh, but I I understand Mr. Brown's concern, and yes, I the whole purpose of this is obviously being the daily bailing during the COVID times, but we'll stay there as necessary.
Yep.
The existing Town Hall, even if we renovate it at this point, will never be a true Town Hall building anymore. It's just not structurally designed for it. So to turn it back to its glory as a meeting space, then it can be used as a formal meeting space.
Okay.
So I guess we're taking a bet on the risk is that somewhere down the road, we will get a new Town Hall. So we need to do the preparation for the septic, as Scott was saying, at the library and existing Town Hall, but there'll be some discussion or thought about, you know, where the proposed septic field would be for the new Town Hall, but yes.
And also, as you remember, uh, I've spoken to the other members of the former TCVC, and all four of them or four of them would like to continue. The committee has also contacted two people that we would like to include in the committee. They're Gun Hall to, oh, I don't know about Gun Hall. They're amenable to join the committee, and those are Laura Gunn and Catherine Casper. Also, we're going to look and see if um, Mary Woodward, who is a one of the people that are very interested in energy efficiency, would join us as well. So I haven't contacted her yet, but I'd like the board to consider those particular people. So we'll get them submit applications. So I think we're moving forward. That's great.
We're moving forward. Okay, I had a motion on the floor, and it was seconded. We just had formal discussion. I need to go for a roll-all vote. Mr. Bugby?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Lacorice, yes, motion carries. Thank you, Scott, on this.
All right. Um, the last thing I request from the Historical Society, this is under the assumption that, one, we move out of the annex and we move out of the Town Hall, but the Historical Society would like use of the Annex Building just for storage, cold storage. If um, the building is empty, uh, possibly they can use it for the large items, but they have some some storage needs. So that would fulfill some of their particular requirements. So I'm asking permission from the board, and of course, as long as this goes through with the daily building, uh, and Karen and Bill are not there and all that stuff isn't there, uh, to use that particular structure for storing Historical Society items.
Is is this a permanent plan for them?
Well, not necessarily. They're just looking for some place to store all their stuff. Right now, they've got it in multiple people's garages, and they were looking for a place to store those particular things.
Because, and I mean, I guess it depends on how they intend to use it. You know, one of the ways I was thinking that we were going to pay for the utility costs at the daily building is that Town Hall and the Annex would be vacated, and there wouldn't be much of a draw on either the electricity or the heat.
Well, this is cold storage. That's what I mentioned. They don't need heat. They don't need water. They don't need anything. It's just a place to store stuff that's out of those elements.
Right, we'd still, and we maybe we were going to keep the electricity on anyway, but just so everybody understands, we will be paying more bills on behalf of the Historical Society.
Well, they don't need any of those particular utilities. Maybe they go in and turn the lights on every once in a while, but that's about it.
Right, but I mean, obviously, there's a whatever it is, forty, forty-five dollar fee just to have electricity to a building from ever source, whether you turn the whether you turn the lights on or not.
Okay.
Can I speak for a second?
Go ahead.
Why don't they just put it in the hobo shed then?
Well, that's already filled with stuff. I don't think there's any room in there. We'd have to check with Bill, but he's got his workshop in there, and then the generator and the trailer is on the other side, so.
I have a bunch of stuff stored in there that I'll be leaving, so I there's more room than you probably think in there.
All right, all right. Well, they asked me to bring this forward, so I'm asking on their behalf, so. And we can say no, we can say yes, we can say we want to think about it, so.
I have a question.
Yep.
Uh, it's by understanding that the fire alarm panel is in the annex.
Yeah.
Fire alarm panel serves all the other buildings.
Hmm, I believe it does.
So if you turn off the electricity to the building, what happens?
It doesn't work.
Doesn't work.
That's that's just my comment.
Well, I would think even if the the place isn't used for storage for the Historical Society, you'd probably still leave the power on anyways, just in case.
Probably still leave the power on, yeah.
Yeah, so I look at it this way, and just my thoughts at this point, since it is truly cold storage, and this is just a temporary cold storage situation, as long as it stays cold, it's not turned on to heat, and it's not used for sitting room or anything else, I will allow it, as long as the other two selectmen agree as well.
I'm okay with it.
Mr. Brown?
Okay.
Okay, temporary cold storage.
And if Mr. Lacorice ever gets his way and he gets a controlled burn for that particular building, we will definitely move all the stuff out, so.
There we go.
There you go, Mr. John. Thank you, that's all I had.
Okay, thank you very much. Julie Glover, Town Administrator.
So I'm hoping that this is the last version of this policy for a while that we have to talk about. The change that this one, this version makes is that we are not able to force employees to take a COVID test. So this gives the employee a choice. Either they get a test that tests negative, or they quarantine for fourteen days. Uh, what I'm waiting for is um, whether we have to pay them for those fourteen days under the, uh, what's it called, the FFCRA, um, if they have another choice. I've I've heard from a couple of municipalities that they believe that under this type of policy, you don't have to pay the employee for the quarantine time. I mean, they can use sick and annual time if they want to, but we would not be required to. But in any event, we can't force somebody to take a COVID test.
I didn't think you could. Everybody had a chance to look at it?
Yep.
Okay. I've looked at it twice, maybe more. So I think it's pretty good there. I move to approve the COVID nineteen travel policy as presented. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Brown, your vote?
Yes.
Mr. Bugby?
Yes.
Ms. Lacorice, yes, motion carries. Go ahead, Julie.
Thank you. Uh, the next item up for discussion is Halloween, and there has been a lot of talk about Halloween, uh, not just in Lee, but in all of the towns and cities. So in light of that, and originally DHHS, do we have your DHHS, was not going to put out any guidance regarding Halloween. So NHMA went ahead and issued their own guidance and distributed it. After NHMA did that, DHHS decided that they would issue their own guidance. I I can't imagine that it's really going to be much different than what this is and what the CDC, and by the way, can I just say as a taxpayer, a federal taxpayer, I can't believe the CDC has an entire website devoted to Halloween, but they do.
Well, it is.
It's, I think, uh, my opinion is that NHMA is stretching RSA forty-one eleven as a way to say that selectmen could say, no, children of Lee, you cannot trick or treat. Uh, whether, in fact, the health officer can decide that, she probably can. Whether, in fact, the health officer can decide that, she probably can. Whether she wants to or not, she can certainly speak for herself. So I'm just bringing this forward because it has been a major topic of conversation. NHMA is also having an entire webinar devoted to Halloween at the end of the month. But I'm just bringing it forward now to see whether the board wants to make any decisions now, or whether you want to just wait and maybe see what DHHS does, or, or what your thoughts are.
Comments from the board?
My thoughts are these. If you don't want to participate in Halloween, keep your lights off, and don't encourage trick-or-treaters to come to your house. If you're a trick-or-treater and your parents want to allow you to do that, that's their choice. So I don't necessarily want the town of Lee to issue any kind of issuing order to say, no trick-or-treating, or yes trick-or-treating. If they want to do it, they can do it. If they don't, they don't have to.
I agree.
I think that's probably a good viable solution. I don't think I've got a trick-or-treater in twelve years, so I'm not too worried about it.
So then I guess the other question is whether you have any interest in issuing guidance.
Well, I think we just had the guidance that Scott talked about, at least in some form. You put your light on or something to let people know that you're open to trick-or-treating, and that if there's no lights on at all, obviously, people are just not going to answer the door at this time.
Okay, so I guess what I would do is with the health officer and fire chief's assistants and police chief, we'll, we'll put together, maybe we don't call it guidance so much, is we'll just put together a statement that we can put on the website and in the e-crier.
Can I ask the chief, is the chief fire department having safe Halloween drive-by like they did previous years, or is that not happening this year either?
Oh, that's put on by our association. Our association president reached out to Karen for her judgment, and I don't think they're going to do it this year.
Okay, so maybe that can be included as well, that the fire department auxiliary is not doing the drive-by, whatever, or something.
Yep.
And also, who decides the hours? Is that the police chief?
Typically, it's the police chief, yes.
So that's fine with me. Whatever Tom decides, it's fine.
The other thing that has happened in part of the Halloween discussion is, I think it was Durham, or maybe the New Market TA, reached out to surrounding communities suggesting that whatever one of us did, the other one needed to do, so that, for example, if Lee prohibited it, all the Lee kids weren't going to show up in Durham, so. Anyway. So I guess we'll just keep you posted. We'll draft up some language, and we'll continue to keep track of what's being said and done on the subject.
So when is Halloween officially? Is it going to be on the 31st, or when is it going to be?
Always been the 30th in Lee, Madbury, and Durham.
All right, so it's a Wednesday?
I don't even know, to be honest.
It's 30th of, I think that, I think if I just look correctly.
I, I wasn't going to go trick-or-treating, so I didn't pay attention.
30th is a Friday.
Friday, it's a Friday. So if we're doing the Friday, I kind of like the idea of what you mentioned in terms of the other TAs. It'd be nice if it's all on the same night. Because I know people that do just what you said, you know? When it's different times, different, they go to all those different communities to get as much candy as they can. So I'd rather have it the same as those other communities and possibly the same time. I don't know. Chief, do you have it from like five to seven? What's the time to usually have it at?
Correct, five to seven. And I'll, I'll reach out to Barrington and Stratford, and I'll reach out to the departments around us and see what they're going to do for time.
Yeah. Please check in with Madbury and Durham to see what they're doing, too. Because I would think you'd stay in your same, like, Oyster River School District kind of thing, but.
Yep.
That's just a thought.
Sounds like a plan to me.
All right. Now, moving on from that most important topic.
There's a lot of it.
CDC guidelines, an entire website.
It's your money at work.
All right, sorry about this. Wow. Holy cow. All right, geez. Some of you may have seen in the news that President Trump said that employers could defer the payroll tax. I, I haven't seen any real, I haven't read any guidance on it. I don't know anybody that's doing it. It's just a deferral. I certainly don't recommend that we offer it to our employees because they still have to pay the payroll taxes, which would create a paperwork nightmare. And then what do we do if an employee leaves our employment, and then we have to chase after them and collect the taxes, and so it's just a mess. I don't know anybody that's doing it, so. Just putting it in front of the board to see whether you're, have similar thoughts.
I'm not interested in pursuing it at this time.
Okay.
I concur. I do not want us to opt into that.
Okay.
I agree.
Done.
So next, we're going to have a discussion on the fiscal '22 budget, budget guidance. Department heads are putting their budgets together. I think, Scott, the first meeting is October 5th?
Nope.
No, 6th?
September 29th, the police department and the library.
Oh, wow, okay.
Coming up quick.
It is coming.
Week for tomorrow.
Right, it is coming up quick. So just trying to find out whether the board has any thoughts. In terms of the tax rate and spending and revenue, you know, fiscal '21, we might be okay. I think it's fiscal '22 that may present some issues, but we're just never going to know. I, I don't know how you feel, though, about, let's just call it, quite frankly, the optics of putting forward budget increases or wage increases, considering what's going on. So I guess really, that's just the discussion I wanted to have with the board, what your thoughts are.
My original thought on this would just go with a flat budget, so no increase.
Okay.
I concur. I think as we get closer to how the second tax bills are coming in December, I think we need to just do an ascertainment in terms of how things are going. If people are paying their taxes, that's fine. If people are unable to pay their taxes, I think we have to look at the current budget plus also next year's budget '22 as well.
Right.
So, and I think the discussion in terms of salary increases, in my opinion, will all be dictated on that. So I'm not saying no salary increases. I'm just saying, let's keep that as a separate discussion.
Okay, but for now, department heads should submit budgets with a zero percent increase.
That is correct.
Yep.
All right.
Well, can we talk about things that they have no control over?
Sure.
Because there's certain things that are going to go up just because they go up all the time, so.
The retirement system.
Yeah, so I, I think, in terms of clarifying that particular directive, I would say if, if it's non-discretionary, like, for instance, Linda gets software support. If they're going up 5%, I don't want her to have to cut back on something else by 5%. So I want to control those particular budgets, but if they have no control over that increase, they need to submit whatever that increase is.
So again, let's just take, let's just use Linda as an example. So let's, her software support goes up, you would not be looking to her to cut other areas of the budget to keep the whole budget flat?
No, because she has no control over those. So like, say, for instance, her budget is $50,000. I know it's way more than that, $50,000. Software goes up by another five. I'm not expecting her to cut out $5,000 of someplace else so that her budget for next year, '22, comes in at $50,000 again.
Okay.
Same thing with your budget. I, I don't know where you'd find the extra money in terms of when retirement, you know, comes due, in terms of the extra retirement. That, that's not realistic.
Okay.
So, and I think some of her are going to be more, you know, extravagant than others in terms of their amounts, like retirement's going up tens of thousands of dollars.
Right.
I expect you to find $10,000 of someplace else. That's not real, at least, in my opinion, that's not realistic.
Right.
But for instance, if, you know, a prescription, a, a subscription that the chief gets and chief of police is, you know, thirty bucks, and now it's 45, you know, that's under his discretion. He can choose not to get it. It's not like something he has to have. Maybe, maybe he'll disagree with me, but those are the kind of things that I want people to be understanding that, you know, they have no control over those particular increases. Like, the chief just did the contract. Maybe his only budgeted $9,000 previously. Now it's $9,100. I don't expect him to cut out something else. That's something that he has no control over.
Right, okay.
And I'm in agreement with that, but I want to make sure that those areas are highlighted, and the people making the presentation say, we don't have any control on these issues.
That, that's a good point.
Okay.
Okay, anything else we want to talk about with the budget right now?
No, I'm good at that. Mr. Brown, you haven't said anything.
Well, I, I do have a few words to say. Thank you for allowing it. If, if we're going to have budget presentations, I think absolutely the guidance should be, we want to, we want to try and hold the budget at the current level, or put a plus up in there somewhere. But we definitely also need to know what the needs are. I mean, we want to go forward. Obviously, money's going to be tight, I think. And, but we need to know the need, so I would expect that, that the direction would be, hey, you got to tell us, you got to tell us what your needs are, so we know what the shortfall is going into, say, the next year, or even maybe the year after. But we need to know the shortfall based on the needs against the current budget.
I understand that as well. Any other comment? Okay, Julie, move on.
Okay, so the update on the leased office space. I'll try to get through this without crying. So we've, you know, we've moved the goalpost yet again with the movers to October 15th. Remember our original date was September 1st. And Karen can certainly speak to this, but she's spoken with the engineer that Mr. Daley hired, and I believe that they are of the opinion that if DOT allows, I think it was two-foot, what's the word I'm looking for? Shoulders, thank you. The turn lanes could be accommodated just by moving the lines, which is what we've hoped. So assuming that that's true, and the engineer does this work quickly, and DOT approves it quickly, we still have to find a contractor to do it. You know, that's less than a month away. In addition to that, the federal election is November 3rd, and I think Linda's still on the call. I, I think I would like to hear from her as to her thoughts, whether it might be smart at this point to just schedule the move for after the November 3rd election. The problem I have with that is we're still doing what we're doing, you know, for another six weeks. Unless Mr. Daley wants to be kind with us, we have to start paying the lease payments as of October 1st. So again, I'll, I'll let Linda chime in, and I'll let Karen chime in, and then I'm interested to hear what the board has to say on it.
Oh, Julie is correct. I've spoke with the engineer who's been hired by Mr. Daley to design the left-hand turn lane. DOT did a preliminary review, and it is definitely, a left turn lane will be required. The final review has not been done by the other, I think it's in Concord that does the final review, but the preliminary review shows a left turn lane. A right turn lane is warranted for AM only, so they think preliminarily that it will just be a left-hand turn lane. I spoke with Bedford Design today, Bob Baskerville. He is doing the work for Jim Daley. And we are going to try to schedule an onsite meeting with DOT to discuss what their, their requirements are going to be in the aerial view, doing the measurements. If DOT allows a two-foot shoulder on each side, there is enough pavement. I don't know if, if a two-foot shoulder is enough. I don't know. That will come out in our meeting. Everything else is moving along nicely. I would also like the board's permission to schedule the paving. I know it had been put on hold until we found out from DOT, but where time is of the essence, where November 15th, typically the hot top plants close. If we, we need to get that parking lot paved and everything lined for the flow to work correctly. So we'd like to get permission, if possible, to get start, get that paving scheduled.
I feel that we really don't have much choice. We've committed ourselves to the daily building. I do understand that Mr. Daley will be, if there's required, to put more hot top on the 125. That's something he will be covering?
Correct. And he realizes that in order to rent that building, regardless of who it's to, he has to do the left-hand turn lane.
And the, the hot top that we're putting over there behind the, we're covering that cost?
We're covering up to $7,000.
And he covers the rest?
Yep.
Okay. I think we need to move forward to get this going, because I truly believe it's all going to come together in the end. And we will probably be in that building for at least three years, so we need to get some of this work done and take the risk.
Okay.
All right, Mr. Bugby, Mr. Brown, comment?
I agree. Go ahead. Go ahead, Karen.
No, I agree. I, I think we should. The only comment I have, and I'll ask Julie to look at it. Towards the back of the lease, there's a couple paragraphs that almost talk like a force majeure issue. If the building, for whatever reason, reason, becomes unoccupiable because of a tree falls, or whatever, whatever.
Right.
I don't know, some of the wording to me was confusing. I just would like you to look at it and see if, if what you think.
You mean, like, in terms of who pays to fix the building, or?
Well, who pays to fix the building? If the building is not fixable in a short period of time.
Right.
You know, who is, who is responsible? Who pays the rent, or doesn't pay the rent, or? Exactly, you know, it, it's just, it's just kind of confusing to me.
Okay, I'll review it again and, and let you know my thoughts.
Okay.
My question is for Karen. Karen, based on your conversations you'd have with DOT, do you think this is eventually, I, I know John's got his rosy-colored glasses on, but.
Better believe it.
What is your thoughts in terms of this going forward? Are we going to get there, or is there?
Oh, we're going to, we're going to get there. Oh, we're going to get there, sure.
All right, all right.
Absolutely.
All right, I'll hold you to that.
Sure, go right ahead.
Well, we don't have much choice, do we?
No, and it's just, as you know, everything takes time, and, you know, this District 6 has got more, a lot of driveways that they're doing. They don't, you know, they're, they just got it, they take them as they come in. It's just all, you know, like, as working, as John knows from being on the planning board, everything takes time. Move five steps forward, and you take ten steps back. It's just any, it's like any other project.
Anything else, Julie, on this issue?
Um, well, I'd still like to hear from Linda and then hear the board's thoughts on, do we, if we can, do we try to move before Election Day? Or do we just pin the date after Election Day?
Well, I finally figured out how to do this. I'm sorry. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. Personally, my preference would be after the election. I, I just, I think it would be confusing to the people with their absentee ballots as to, you know, if you're not there, if you're there, where are you? How do I do this? I, and I just think it would be easier if it was after the election. But that's, that's just my input, but, you know, if, if we can go sooner, you know, obviously, everybody has the input, so, you know, we can vote on that. But my input would be to wait until after the election. Less confusing, less confusing for the voters.
And, and based on the volume of calls and emails that we got for the primary election, and, and maybe everybody figured it out for the primary, and nobody will have any questions for this election. As much as I want to move, I just think it... As much as I wanna move, I, I just think it, we probably don't wanna add that additional level of confusion.
Yeah, and I think it would be extremely confusing.
And I think reality is too, we're almost to the last, we're, well, we are in the last week of September.
Right.
Bob Baskerville and I need to meet with DOT, so in a perfect world, that will be next week. I've asked for this week, but it probably won't be until next week. Then he has to design it. So now we're in the third week of October. Then it has to get approved by the state and then it has to get put in. So I don't think, as much as it would be great to say, I don't think it's gonna be until after the election anyway.
Right.
And, uh, my opinion on this is probably we should wait till after the election. We're not gonna allow the public to go in without having the, you know, the left turn lane installed. I mean, that's, I think we're asking for trouble at that point. I think that was discussed at the planning board as well.
Right.
So I guess after the election is the way to go.
Okay, again, just to, to let the board know, we're still moving forward. I'm still signing purchase orders and ordering equipment and signing off on having Comcast do whatever Comcast needs to do in the new building, so that's all still happening.
Absolutely. Like I said, it's, um, it's risk worth taking. We don't have much choice at this time.
Right.
Mr. John?
Yes.
Can we ask, uh, and probably she's got enough to do, but I'm gonna ask her to do it anyways.
Yes.
We asked the town administrator to contact Mr. Daly and see if he'll give us, uh, a delay in terms of starting the contract until November first or something?
Okay.
So we don't have to pay that month when we're not even actually in there?
Right.
And maybe if he's amenable, maybe we go havesies on it or something. I'm just trying to save some money.
Yep, well, yeah, I, I absolutely understand.
Worst he can say is no, so.
But in reality, you're already in there.
Well, technically using it.
Right. Um, and then I had thought, well, gee, was, is there any way that we could, you know, move the rest of us and leave the town clerk tax collector here? We could do that. Um, it would involve, I'm sure, extra costs because we'd have to get the moving company here twice, um, because we can't take, unless we could, uh, but I don't think we can take her safes.
Mm-hmm.
Um, while they're still.
You could probably, you could, I was gonna say, you could probably take two.
Oh, really?
Yep.
But we won't have the turn lane installed before the election anyway.
Ugh, you're such a killjoy, Karen.
Like I said, we gotta have that turn lane in there.
Right, it's not worth the liability of, of somebody getting rear-ended and then there, it's a lawsuit, it's a windfall for whoever's in the accident.
Yeah.
I, I, yeah, I, I think we should delay in terms of moving, but let's ask and see if we can get some off on the rent or something, so.
Okay, all right.
This will be a great opportunity and plenty of time to shred, destroy, burn, or whatever you wanna do.
Oh, yeah, Denise and I have already started that process.
Very good.
We're, the police department had already gone through their records and they have, I think, twenty-nine boxes of documents to be shredded. So the plan is to get one of those mobile shredding units.
Mm-hmm.
Um, go to the police department, shred their records and then come over and shred the, the, we've been collecting.
Can it shred hard pa, are the, uh, like ballots, the thicker, thicker?
I, it, it can shred books, so I'm guessing it can.
A book all at once?
Yeah, the only thing it can't, they can't shred are, uh, three-ring binders. But Denise asked and they said they could shred even hardcover books.
Well, I would like to jump on that bandwagon. I've got ballots from years past that need to be shredded.
Yep, yeah, that's the plan. We're not gonna carry it with us. We're gonna put it all in the shredder out in the parking lot.
So obviously, Mr. Town Administrator, you need to notify all the departments if they got stuff for shred, coordinate it with you.
Yep. Yeah, I'm letting y'all know now. The big shredding truck is coming.
It's coming. It could have a party out there.
That's right.
Uh, we don't wanna do that, COVID, right?
Shredding party. A socially distanced shredding party.
Shredding party. And the band played on Waltz and Matilda, right?
I have a question for Julie.
Yeah.
Um, have we submitted as a town our request for COVID funding from the state yet?
Yes, the first, we received our first check, it was a while ago, and that was, uh, around twenty-two thousand dollars.
Okay.
The second request, uh, actually totaled over three-hundred-and-twenty-nine thousand dollars.
Yep.
Because we submitted on our payroll in addition to other expenses, but the balance that we can get is eighty-one thousand, seven-hundred-and-sixty-four.
All right, good.
So.
And, and the elections, we also, for elections, we submit a different, uh, different grant or whatever, but.
Right. And that was some, somewhere around eight thousand something, Linda?
I believe so, yes. And, and we'll probably get the ba, well, we will, we'll get the balance of, I think it was what? Uh, was eleven or twelve thousand? We'll get that after the, um, the general.
Yeah, so I mean, we're, I, I know that the fire chief and, and Karen were working on the FEMA reimbursement, so we're definitely applying for all the money that's out there.
Good.
And speaking of which,
Yep.
So on September fifth, um, everybody was alerted to the fact that FEMA was, is not going to allow schools to submit their PPE expenses for FEMA reimbursement. So the schools are now looking to the towns to try to get, um, our Gopher money. So I explained to Sue Caswell that I expected that we were gonna get our full allotment, but if anything changed, I would let her know.
Okay.
Oh, so.
Anything else with Town Administrator?
Uh, well, actually, I do have one other thing. So I'd like to ask the board's permission to reimburse, um, the finance officer, the town secretary, the account assistant and myself for cell phones at, you know, thirty dollars a month, like a number of other employees get, dating back to at least July first. You know, because of the way we've been working, our cell phones are the office phone. And to be honest, I think it's only fair to, to grant that reimbursement. And before you ask, we'll, we'll find the money somewhere.
How many are those? Five?
Four.
Four?
Four.
I think it's fully justified at this point. Can't we apply for money to the care's act because of that as well?
Uh, that I don't think so. Plus, if they, if they give us all of the money from the second request, then the money's gone, so. Our total allotment was a hundred and four thousand, three-hundred-and-ten dollars.
Okay.
So we're hoping to just get that somehow.
Is this request starting from July first till whenever or when you get into the new building?
I guess it would be until we're no longer all working remotely.
All right, I'm okay with that.
I, I'm okay as well. I think it's fully justified.
All right, thank you very much.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, I think that's all I have.
Next item is the, I move to accept the consent agenda as presented. You have a second?
Second.
I don't hear much flaming discussion, therefore I'll go for roll call vote. Mr. Bugby?
I was having, gonna have flaming discussion. In terms of letter nine E, there is no conservation easement or anything on that particular property, right?
Nine E?
Yeah, Karen?
We intend to cut.
You're muted, Karen.
Is that one all, Wood Hall on Thompson Mill Road?
It's just got a lot map and stuff, so.
Um, what's the lot map number?
Oh, don't ask me that, I don't have it up.
I'm pretty sure that's Wood Hall on Thompson Mill Road. There is a conservation easement on it and the conservation commission is all set with the cut. Um, I got an email to verify that from Bill Hump.
Excellent, okay. I, I'm done with my flaming discussion.
Okay. Hearing no more flaming discussions. I'll go for roll call vote. Mr. Bugby?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Yes, of course, yes, motion Carrie. So consent agenda has been accepted. Couple of questions on the miscellaneous. Since we're talking about the library renovation, a little bit of, uh, maybe the existing town hall renovation. Remember there was a boundary line thing that the town's vision committee had found is, what did we decide to do with that?
We decided, we decided to do nothing with it.
Okay.
Is that the place by the bog?
Yeah, at the time, my recollection is that the board, we, it, it's unlikely that anyone is ever gonna make an issue out of it and it, and you felt that it wasn't worth the money to pay an attorney to chase it down through eternity to try to straighten it out.
And the only reason I bring this up because now the library is expanding.
Yep.
I don't know if it has any infringement in that area. Things have changed since we had the discussion. I guess that's what I'm getting to.
Right, but I don't think the library expansion is near the area that was in question.
No, I don't think it is either. I think it's more behind the Bannister Building out back along this, the bog and the mark, that it's not near there.
It, it is within the wetlands protection area though, that, that addition, so.
Right.
Yeah, but it's still not close.
Excuse me?
I don't think it's very, I still don't think it's close. I think it's, I think the area is like in the bog. The area in question is in the bog.
No, I'm talking about the wetlands protection. There's a seventy-five foot out of that wetlands area.
Correct, but this isn't, I don't believe that this is anywhere near that.
That, where their addition is going? I'm pretty sure it is.
No, the, the area in question.
Oh, no, not the area in question. I'm talking about the library addition.
Exchange subject.
Right, no, but I don't think the area in question is anywhere near the la, the library addition.
No, no, I understand that. I've moved on. I've moved on. John was talking about the addition.
Subjects.
Talking about the wetlands protection zone, it's seventy-five feet and it's within that.
They will need to, they, they, historically, they have gone to the zoning board to seek relief.
Yeah.
Historically.
Wow.
Yes, historically.
The town doesn't have to adhere by its own regulations, but I think it's good practice that we all do.
Agreed.
Agreed.
That's why the daily building went in front of the, brought a select, uh, she was in the planning board.
Yeah.
The, the second comment I have is, listening to the news tonight, they, looks like we're gonna move from, you know, to extreme drought pretty soon, correct?
Uh, I think we're in severe now, but it seems likely.
And right now, we basically put something in the inquiry, just say we've recommended.
Yep.
I feel that it's gonna be stronger language, a little, I don't know if we have to do it now, but I want the, less of the board members to think about that. Where would we go? And Karen, what kind of recommendation would you make?
I agree with you. We need to increase our awareness and make sure that people are strongly encouraged not to do outside watering and to serve water whenever possible.
I have not and, uh, heard about people's wells going dry and leave, but people talk about it on the news all the time. So I wanna make sure we keep our finger on the pulse here.
Yeah, I mean, we can certainly keep it as an agenda item, um, and definitely if Stratford County moves into extreme.
I would, I would hope so, to keep it on everybody's mind as much as possible.
Yeah.
Anything else on the miscellaneous and unfinished business?
No.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.